The November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Evans. Absent, Madamore.
Here.
Heisler White. O'Toole.
Here.
Schneider, absent, and Moody.
Here.
We have four present and two absent, one vacant seat. Chair.
Okay, so is 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 the vacancy Sylvie's not going to be coming anymore?
Um, no, I believe the last meeting was her last meeting. Um, I think her term expired on October thirty first. Um, so we have received um four applications, so uh the council interview panel just need to uh hold interviews and recommend an appointment to the council.
Okay, great, maybe move.
Hopefully we'll have that by the next meeting. Yeah.
All right. Um. So uh first order is approval of agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Presented, Tom thinks we should approve it, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Agenda approved as presented. Um. Uh, next is the um our meeting minutes. Um, is there a motion to approve the the October twenty eight, twenty twenty four minutes as presented?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Second from Donald. Um, all those uh in favor of approving the minutes of the October twentieth meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay? Okay, minutes good, and I think we've got the assembled people that we need to approve those minutes, so that's that's good. Next on the on the agenda is citizen comments on non-agenda related items. No action will be taken. Is there anybody out there that wants to come to the podium? Seeing none. Uh, we will move to planning commission and staff reports and comments. Philip and company?
Yes, honorable chair, members of the commission, a couple announcements this evening. Uh, first of all, in addition to the vacancy we have, which I encourage you to, you know, let people know about, um, on on the planning commission, we also have an application period that's open for the city manager's budget advisory committee. Um, please send me an email if you're interested in that. Um, the committee will be starting to meet in the new year, I believe. Um, secondly, the the meeting scheduled for December twenty third for this body has been canceled because um a city holiday has been issued and approved by city council, so uh the city offices actually won't be open that day, so uh we won't have that meeting.
Um, and that's um D- December what?
Twenty third.
So so what are we supposed to do on the twenty third? Just go home and wrap presents? You want to wrap?
Get your Christmas shopping done, right? Um, and lastly, the um, if you remember, city council issued um a an allotment of funds for each board and commission with the city, we we've used that, or you all have used that for uh purchasing a tent so far that we use for the farmer's market outreach. There are still funds available in that, um, so I encourage you all to let me know if you have any ideas, want to talk about what would be good to use those funds for. It's really about raising the awareness of what what you all do and what this body does, so. But those are my announcements.
Okay, i- is that, does that money go away at the end of the year, or is it just?
It's always good, it's always better to use it, right? I think it I it probably rolls over, but I can get you an answer, but.
Is it on, is it on Disco?
It.
Yeah.
Do you mind? Um, so this was um a pilot, you know, kind of experiment of uh providing some of the boards and commissions with the funds to um kind of expand, let the public know what you do um and stuff. So um if uh the city manager recommends it to the council again and they reapprove um funds, then we'll have funds available in the next fiscal year, but as of right now, this would just go through June.
Okay. That's it from staff, any anything from uh commission members that want to talk about? Okay. Seeing none. Um, next item is disclosures, exportate communications, potential conflicts of interest. Anyone have a confession to make?
Do we need to mention? Well, go ahead. Do we need to mention uh meeting with Derek about the the mine? Is that something we need to disclose?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that was just sort of a just a so we won't tell you guys about it. It's just gonna be our secret.
Didn't even tell me.
Well, I mean, it's it's not an item. Right, it was, it was just sort of informational. Um. So, next, uh, no, there's a, there's no old business listed on the agenda, and so we'll proceed to new business, uh which is uh first item is CUP dash twenty four dash oh five, uh forty two nineteen Pueblo Drive, alternative front lot line, Emma.
Honorable Chair and Commission, the item here before you is, as you said, a conditional use permit for alternative front lot line for four two one nine Pueblo. Representing the application, we have Sherry Von Wolf via Zoom, and then I believe we also have Grant Lindstrom as well with us in person. So the applicants, Jordan and Grant Lindstrom, are applying for alternative front lot line, which follows the conditional use permit procedure, because the owner of the property, Hunter Brown, owns a corner lot, and the setbacks were making it tough for them to orient their house and detached garage the way that they wanted. The zoning is R one, single-family residential, and the surrounding land use is also R one. Currently, most of these lots are undeveloped, and a few are under construction. And to give you some background on front lot lines, they were historically marked on the final plat. However, they have since been simplified in code to read the following. Front lot line means the property dividing a lot from a street. On a corner lot, only one street line shall be considered as a front lot line. The front lot line shall be the shorter street frontage or alternatively designated, and so they are pursuing that alternatively designated um procedure today. So for corner lots, as long as there's only one front lot line, so that they comply with the front setbacks required by our code, it does not really matter which street side is designated the front, unless there's a really unique situation with easements or some other situation that does not exist for this property. So looking at this property and where it's located, based on the front lot line definition, the line would have been Indian Heights Drive, that is the shortest lot line. And through this process, the application, the applicants are requesting that Pueblo Drive is designated the front lot line. In terms of the front lot line, the orientation of the house and the street it is addressed off of do not matter, as we are primarily concerned with setbacks with our code for especially single-family residential, we really don't have a lot of regulations. So then going into the requirements for conditional use permit, I'll go over the pertinent ones is, as most have no change. So for four A, under the requirements for setbacks, the alternative front lot line would rearrange the setbacks on the site, and the planned house and detached garage will be in compliance within the new setbacks. This allows the applicant to keep their detached garage in the desired location north of the house. For public comment, we sent out notification according to the alternative front lot line procedure, which only requires written notice to adjacent property owners. We received one comment against this conditional use permit, which I forwarded on to you relating to concerns of privacy and views with the orientation of the four two one nine Pueblo Drive house. Since the planning department is tasked with following the Unified Development Code, and as this conditional use permit meets our requirements, staff is recommending approval, and please let me know if I can answer any questions for you all.
Okay, any questions for for Emma on on this from commission members?
So if we approve this, uh, we are not ending up causing a civil suit, as far as you understand the Unified Development Code.
That is correct.
Okay. So if we approve this, in other words, the unusual orientation of the garage, uh, we are not likely to end up uh causing a civil suit.
Well, I drove it. Okay, and lots two, three, all the other lots would be facing Pueblo Drive as their front lot line. That's correct, and this I don't see would be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh. I I don't, okay, that's all. And as long as it's within the code, I don't see a problem with it, but uh I'd like to hear from the person who thinks it's a problem.
So one question, Emma, um, what do you think the logic was of choosing the shortest lot line as the front line?
So Chair, I spoke to Derek a little bit about this, and if you look most other lots, especially interior lots, you'll see that primarily the shortest lot line is the front lot line. Um, and so I believe when it was put into code, they went with that as kind of the justification for corner lots as well, so it would kind of abide by the rest of the property. I can always look into that further as well.
Oh, that's sort of just like, that's just sort of what has been done in the past.
Yeah.
Um, i- in thinking about it, if if it's, you you have like, what, a forty-five foot setback from the front, and so that's a kind of a big chunk of real estate that 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 restricts where you put the house, and so the front, if you do it on the front, it 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 doesn't affect, it doesn't restrict as much of the property than if it was on the long side. And so I I'm just sort of, in my own mind, just thinking that maybe that short lot line i- is to to give the landowner a more, a little more flexibility of using more of the property for for putting structures and and adhering to setbacks is, but that's just, that's just my 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 look at it, that's all.
Thank you, Chair.
And so, I mean, I would think that it would be, you know, good to give a landowner as much flexibility um if they want to to use that that longer lot line as their front, which kind of restricts how they put it, you know, if that's, that's what the landowner wants, what the heck, you know? Um, and and so the the setbacks are met, and I assume that the garage and the other structures all meet the height requirements that are per code.
Yeah, that is correct, and so on a corner lot, the side setback for a detached structure, um, which is what the garage is, is twenty-two point five feet, and it does meet those setbacks as well on the Pueblo or on the Indian Heights Drive side.
Gotcha, okay. Um. Okay, so uh if the applicant wants to come up and and uh and say something, you're you're welcome to. State your name and.
Jordan Lindstrom, the applicant, and also builder. Um, they picked this lot, and uh other houses have their garage on Indian Hills, forty-two eleven Mojave does the same thing, and pretty much I'm here for any other questions that you might have, so.
Okay, are there any questions from commission for the applicant? They're, the main rationale is you just have a larger backyard?
Um, yes, that way they're they're, that way their side yard's bigger um to that side, and then part of the reason they bought the lot was it was a corner lot, and that you can have some flexibility on where you put your garage, um, rather than buying an interior lot where it's pretty cut and dry, so.
Hey, thank you. And they have to shovel more snow.
Yes, yes.
Which is always fun.
I have a corner, yeah.
Okay, well, thank, uh, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um. So um we've had our discussion, is there a public comment on uh that want to come, anyone that wants to come up and state their case, come?
Bernie Lebel. Um, my wife is the one that wrote the uh the letter, and uh I'm here instead of her, because she would be upset. Um. What, when we read through everything and I went on to the website, this is not clear to us. Which way is the front of that house going to face, south or west? I mean, you're all talking, and I don't understand half of what you said, and I'm a reasonably educated man, so please put it in simple terms for me. Which way is the house front going to face? Is it going to be on Pueblo, or is it going to be on Indian Hills?
Emma, here.
Uh, Chair, through you, the house will be facing Indian Heights.
Indian Hills.
Indian Hills, so west.
It's gonna be facing west. Okay, because when I read through uh on the website, often, it sounded like this, the garage is going to be pulled forward to get rid of that forty-five foot setback. So I'm just gonna say that whatever you guys write in there or somebody, it's not very clear to the layman. Okay, and my wife got very upset, and I had to calm her down, that's why she's not here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, Tom.
If I may, for Emma, all the other homes that we are indicated here like God in block four that are facing Indian Hills, the front of those houses faces India, face Indian Hills, don't they?
Chair, through you, um, so for the interior lots, they would have to be facing the street for the corner lots. Um, as they are not built yet, I am unsure as to their orientation at this time.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion amongst commission?
So, I'm unclear if the the family that was complaining about the orientation of the house, is there, are they at peace with how the house is oriented?
Not really.
helpful.
And and the the lot, the the designated front lot line doesn't have to be the front of the house?
Chair, that is correct.
Okay, and 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 the address, though, is is Pueblo?
Chair, yeah, that is also correct.
Um. Yeah. Oh, hi, hi, Sherry, uh, uh, what um you wanna?
Hi, um.
Is this your pu- public comment?
Yes, um, can you hear us?
Barely.
Barely, okay, um, how about now, if I speak up a little bit?
That's good.
Okay, great, um, well, honorable Chair and distinguished members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We are the architects, um, working with the Inoue Brown family. Our firm is Atelier Corbeau, and my name is Sherry Von Wolf, and my partner is here with me as well. His name is Travis Miller. Um, and we just wanted to speak up in support of the CUP and um reiterate what was said by others. Um, the owners perform their due diligence in meeting all the zoning requirements for a corner lot, and the standards don't define requirements for the front of the house location on corners. Um, there's precedent with uh other homes on corner lots in the neighborhood, one of which is a a block south of our client's lot with a similar, um, you know, two faces on the corner. Um, also, just to share that the owners were really thoughtful about how they approached the site layout. They they've, um, the house is designed to be respectful of both street frontages by significantly exceeding the setbacks, allowing for a gracious landscape buffer on both street edges, as well as a garden behind, which the greens, maximizing green space is important to them. Um, also, by exceeding the setback on Indian Hills, there's almost a hundred feet of space between the closest portion of the two fronts of the houses, plus the slight rotation of the Inoue Brown house further offsets the face-to-face orientation for even greater privacy. Um, so we just wanted to say that, um, you know, given that the owners meet all the zoning requirements, we respectfully request approval of this CUP and are also available if you have any questions of us.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Sherry. Uh, any final questions from commission? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll take it. Uh, I move to approve a conditional use permit number twenty-four dash zero five for the establishment of an alternative front lot line to be placed along Pueblo Drive as opposed to the current front lot line along Indian Hills Drive on a lot zoned R one, single-family district, located at forty-two nineteen Pueblo Drive, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. Um, any discussion from commission on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Evans, absent, Madamore.
Aye.
Heisler White.
Aye.
O'Toole.
Aye.
Vacant seat, Snyder, absent, Moody.
Aye.
That's four yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Chair.
Okay, so initial use permit passes and um select. Next item of business is um text amendment, TA dash twenty-four dash oh four, amendments to fifteen dot fourteen dot one twenty dot H for the allowance of digital billboards within city limits. Philip.
Yes, honorable Chair, members of the commission, um, this item is recommended for postponement. We are continuing to work with the applicant to um help them present language that is easier to navigate and to understand. Uh, we were not ready to bring something forth this evening, so is the applicant's request to ask for postponement. Um, so we are hoping to have something at the next meeting, but I would advise not to put a date in the postponement, but just go with that motion that's there. Glad to take any questions.
Okay, any questions, uh, Donald?
So, just very briefly, what is the problem in the Unified Development Code that Planning Division is seeking to fix?
Honorable Chair, through you, um, I I I must say that this is upon an applicant's request. This isn't like a text amendment cleanup that we're bringing, so this is something that we're trying to help them navigate. Currently, though, uh, there's non-conforming billboards, there's a non-conforming um all billboards within the city limits outside of the I eighty corridor are non-conforming. Hence, they cannot be altered in any way. What the applicant's proposing is changing that to allow not only to be able to change these billboards, but to change them to digital billboards, which would add lighting and and other aspects to them. So the problem is that our code doesn't allow currently for any change to billboards within the city limits outside of I eighty corridor.
So so these billboards were like grandfathered in?
Yes.
Okay. Tom?
Uh, Philip, the uh, this is all based on the uh work session we had with Lamar Advertising on these type of billboards, and so uh it wasn't a very enthusiastic response the way it was. What are you looking for in a code change to uh regulate these, or uh have have you discussed length of time the message is going to change, how often it changes, and uh, they're entitled to sell that billboard to anybody they want, so. I mean, what about hours, uh, let's say after midnight? You know, things like that, is that something you're putting in this?
Uh, honorable Chair, through you, so this is part of the reason for the postponement, is that the applicant's well aware of the city's uh sta- stance on this, which is we're we're not in agreement with with the change, so we're recommending denial as it's been presented at this point. So really, the y- you know, the criteria that you've mentioned, you know, the um the 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 photometrics of a new billboard, the allowance for the for the lighting within a certain distance of residential, all that is still being hashed out. But it it, those are the types of things that we're informing the applicant that they need to address for it to fit into code. But again, with the with the umbrella statement that as staff and with past planning reports and um what the UDC currently states is that we're not, we're not going to recommend, um, we're going to recommend denial, and they're well aware of that.
Oh, so can I speak to the letter, or is it premature to talk about the letter that you received from the representative of Lamar Advertising?
Chair, through you, uh, the the item can be discussed. The recommendation from staff is to postpone.
Okay.
So you you all can carry on with the item as you usually would, but we are recommending postponement upon the applicant's behalf.
So I was baffled by some of the language that was in that letter. It was talking about uh, it would be, it would serve for providing public notifications of government functions and enhancing public welfare. So I I was, I mean, what are the government functions that talking about in their letter?
Chair, through you, I believe we have the applicant uh on Zoom, and maybe she could, she could answer that question. Megan.
Is is Megan there?
An invitation to become a panelist, so she's on the wait.
Carrying on, I mean, uh, on on this letter again, uh, you know, you'd have to pack a big lunch and walk a long, long way to find somebody who's more of the defender of the First Amendment than I am, but I don't see as this is a First Amendment issue unless we deny it totally. So uh, if we could get a regulations or a set of regulations in a code that limit the negative effects of this, you know, it might be something that could be passable. Uh, as was presented to, so now, I know I probably ought to turn by going back to the work session we had. There were some real serious issues with what they presented to us in the work session as far as, you know, just intrusion upon the, upon the community. Uh, we don't want to turn Laramie into the Vegas Strip, but uh if you could come up with some kind of workable solution, I would be amenable to it. I think maybe turn them off after midnight, you know, kind of thing, or, and also the governmental thing is kind of specious, we just approved the county to post all kinds of governmental stuff, and I'm sure if uh the city clerk went over to see Kayla White, they'd let us put a notice on their, on their uh sign, you know, and flashes every now and then. You do talk to each other, I'm sure, so uh, I don't see this, the governmental notice thing as anything but specious unless you have an Amber Alert or something like that, you know, but I just kind of troubled that we're going to the law lawyers before we even try and work up a code, so.
Honorable Chair, through you, before we let Megan, I see she's unmuted, I believe she's ready.
Oh, there she is.
To uh, but but before we, uh, if I may, um, address that concern is that, you know, of course, as we we can't regulate content in signs, right? We can regulate dimensions, we can uh lighting, height, and so forth, but content, you're exactly right, is something that we we would not be able to legally uh regulate.
Okay, um, any more questions for Philip on on this comments?
Don, I guess the reason why I was asking this is it it's at a, it's at an interesting location, because that's where uh, it's at that, close to that junction on Twenty Second Street, where there's often, uh, when there's games and so on, uh, and signage might be appropriate in order to tell people, you know, the road is closed or whatever. Uh, that I would have some sympathy with, but I guess, and maybe that's what they're talking about, public notification of government functions, um, are enhancing the public welfare, but um I guess I strongly support the city in trying to control uh a dizzying set of uh lighted signs down that street. I would, I really don't think that's necessary, I think, uh, I actually looked this up, because I was curious, and I had this number in my head. I think the average person is exposed to somewhere between six thousand and ten thousand advertisements per day in this country. That's a lot of ad- advertisements, and I just fail to see why we would need to have a sign at that location and pleading First Amendment rights at the same time. I guess that leaves a bad taste in my mouth.
Okay, any other comments?
I just have a question, you referenced in the work session.
That was before you came on, I believe. Did we tape that?
Honorable Chair, yes, we, we did. We, that recording is available and I can forward you that. And then you can watch it and, and see the discussion.
If you could forward it to, to all of us, just to remind ourselves of, of, it was, it was a while ago.
Mr. Chair, this is Megan Getz. Could you?
Yeah, okay, Megan, you're, I think we've got our, our questions, uh, for staff taken care of. So Megan, you're up.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Um, my apologies for not being personally there tonight. Um, I will be prepared on behalf of Lamar to answer any questions when we come back and for you, back before you. Um, as, as you probably are all familiar with, Lamar is, um, wanting to modernize the face of the billboard on Grand Avenue, uh, by, uh, the Unowayo Building so that it is, uh, modern and, and conforms with modern day technology. As far as, um, I'll just let you know, and we can give you much more information about this. The reason that we are in agreement to postpone this is, um, we've been trying to work with staff to come up with what some of those amicable benchmarks or boundaries might look like that the city, um, could appreciate for, for that specific board. And so that, that is why, um, we originally submitted the application for both the variance and the text amendment following directives that we understood from staff. Um, Philip has proposed, uh, kind of redesigning how this, uh, conforms with proposed text changes under code. And so we are very happy to do that. We're very much willing to work within, uh, the Planning Department's recommendation of where this might best fit, recognizing that Planning Department's recommendation, um, is going to be to deny this. We've received different feedback from other members, um, of the city and that this would in fact, uh, be something that would be amenable. And so, um, as it relates to government, um, education and government welfare, one of the slots in the, uh, digital modernization could be available for the city to utilize to communicate information. We followed, uh, a very recent work session discussion by City Council as well as an article that reported on this by the Laramie Boomerang about how the, um, the, the City Council and the constituents of the City Manager's Office were, were really looking for more ways in which the messages of the city and its, its agencies could be communicated with members of the public. And so that is what that is referring to. It's referring to that there would be a slot available for the city to communicate however it wanted to, um, as far as government messages and communication with the citizens. Um, this also does follow, uh, what is, what has recently been approved, uh, by you all as you, as the Honorable Chair just mentioned, um, for the county. So this is, this is a like, uh, board and a like type of design that would allow those communicative messages and just simply modernizing and, and actually by providing less light pollution, um, and more economic and environment friendly, uh, materials and, uh, uh, any sort of pollution that you want to consider as this technology is modernized. So we can present all of this to you, um, in more detail. Um, and you can take a look at the workshop that we had with the former commission. Our goal all along has been, let's see if there is a, a way in which we can work together on this. So I'm glad to answer any other questions and certainly I will be there in person and be prepared, um, when you do consider this to entertain those questions, as will Lamar. Um, we did not attend today. I had a medical appointment, but my client did not attend today due to the fact that we believed this would just be recommended for discussion at a future point. Thank you so much.
So, so, so Megan, just a quick, quick question. Um, this would just be for one sign, but as opposed to affecting, but it would have, but the text amendment would affect all existing signs in the city limit. But they're only, Lamar's only proposing one sign.
Yeah, Lamar's preference is just for one sign. You are correct. Um, but, but we were told that that was going to be recommended for denial based on, uh, reasons that I'm sure we'll get to later. And so we are simultaneously asking the commission and the city to consider both alternative paths. We want one sign, um, and if, if the council or the commission feels it needs to get there through a text amendment versus, um, not a variance, uh, you know, we're, we're open to either or option. The intent has never been to expand the number of billboards or expand the number of signs. It's really to modernize, um, one primary sign within the city limits. There are three others along the Third Street corridor that fall within, uh, Lamar's intended audience. Um, so if the, the council and the commission entertains and prefers a text amendment, those are the other options or the other locations that would be impacted. But Lamar is really interested in the sign on Grand Avenue where you already see, um, you know, the brown and gold, you see ACPE, you see the movie theater, you see those electronic messaging systems, just like the one you approved for the courthouse.
Could you consider removal of the existing signs? What there's, you say there's three or four signs that are non-compliant and grandfathered in. You, you remove those signs, but you have this one super, you know, nice, modern sign that's advertising for multiple advertisers. So you.
Y- yes, that has been the reason that we have been, um, trying so diligently and for such a lengthy period to work with the city. That has not been proposed to us. You're the first to bring that up. But I can tell you Lamar's not new and has worked in multiple communities, um, in Wyoming and across the Front Range.
Okay, thank you. If, yeah, Tom?
Chair, uh, if I may, uh, at the work session, one of the discussion points was, uh, the length of time a particular ad was up before the sign changed. And it was mentioned you might change the sign as often as every eight seconds. Is the length of time a particular message on the board something that's, uh, amenable to Lamar to negotiate for a text amendment?
Lamar is amenable to considering anything, uh, that might be requested by the city and talking about whether or not they can make that work. We've not been presented with any alternatives other than a recommendation for denial.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? For Megan? Donald?
Megan, uh, this is Donald O'Toole, uh, and this, you may not want to answer this, uh, which is fine. And I probably shouldn't ask it, but could you give us some sense of the balance between public service notices and advertising that's, that would go on this sign? Or maybe you don't yet know.
Um, Commissioner O'Toole, what I can tell you that we presented in the workshop is that the typical number of slots is seven to eight per billboard messaging system. So, um, what Commissioner Madam Moore just referenced was, you know, would they be flipping eight, every eight seconds? I don't want to represent that that is the timing. I just don't know. My, the Lamar folks would need to confirm that. But there is typically seven to eight slots that are available for advertisement, um, in a given run cycle. And what we presented to the commission during our workshop that was that Lamar was amenable and willing to offer the city one of those slots free of charge. And so, um, they, the city would always have that slot to be able to message and communicate whatever the government's preference was. Now that doesn't mean that other governmental entities or nonprofits or, um, agencies that may have a communication message that's in line with what you're thinking wouldn't utilize that others, one of those other slots. Does that help clarify?
Yes, Megan, uh, thank you. Um, one other question. Could our, do these electronic messaging billboards, uh, would you anticipate they'd be used for political advertising?
I, I wouldn't and know what to anticipate at all. I can just, um, affirm that both the United States Supreme Court, as well as local courts, have prohibited the restriction on what that messaging can look like.
Okay, so there could be political advertising on it, but you just can't say.
Correct. Now, what I can for sure tell you is that Lamar does have a governmental affairs and messaging center that is always controlling what those advertisements would look like. So it prevents absolutely anything improper or what might be, um, offensive to be, um, to be uploaded, if that makes sense. So there's, there is not an opportunity that something, you know, um, inappropriate, vulgar, et cetera, could inadvertently get on the board.
Okay, great. Thank you, Megan.
You bet.
This discussion because it sounds like we're talking about regulating the particulars of on signs, but we're, this is in the context of code. So I'm hopeful that somebody can clarify the path forward here because it sounds like bargaining and other things are going on. So, uh, maybe Philip, you can kind of clarify what is, what the path forward is so that I have a better understanding of, you know, what I need to read and understand for. And I assume this is actually something to be discussed.
Yes, Honorable Chair, through you, I think we need to be very careful as we move forward with this discussion to not run into a quid pro quo type scenario, which we would definitely need to bring our legal team in on if anything like this were pursued, where it was, you know, we're, we're, we're changing code. And if we're going to, you can see how this can be a sticky situation, being offered a slot in a sign where we're, where it's a currently a non-conformity and we're changing that, it just doesn't look good. So I would steer this body away from any discussion like that. And it kind of goes right into the content portion. Um, we're not regulating content. I mean, I, I recall from our work session that a similar question was asked and the representative from Lamar said, yes, if a political candidate paid for all slots, they could be on there the, the, the whole day, right? So there's, so, so there's no, you know, there's no, we can't, I, I want to reiterate, we cannot regulate content. So I don't think that should be a discussion that this body has at all. I would take that off the table entirely, um, because it, it just doesn't lead us down the right path. The, the path forward, um, as Megan mentioned, is trying to find a way for the applicant to present something which, um, which can fit into the proper place in code. I want to just be clear, we're going to be hearing a variance later on when you guys sit at the Board of Adjustment, that is for just that one sign on Twenty Second and Grand. What we're talking about right now is for all of the billboards that Lamar owns, there's five of them in the city limits off of the interstate, that would be affected. Um, you know, staff sees that as, you know, what currently, just as I mentioned before, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but all the plans state that we're not wanting to go in that direction. Other communities our size are not going in that direction. However, are there criteria that Lamar could introduce that could make it palatable? Taking down three of them and leaving one up? I love that idea. I think, you know, maybe that could be considered.
Although it is kind of as John says, you know, like, you know, transactional, which is sort of outside the code.
Well, but that's something different because it's a non-conformity. And we've seen that work in other localities. We actually have in Cheyenne. They, that's what they do, um, is for non-conforming billboards, you can take, I believe it's three, for every three, you can keep one. So you need to consolidate them, which is, is moving us in the right direction, right? And perhaps they are more appropriate in one area of town than another, but, um.
Well, and that would be more, more, um, more sense in, in, in the variance sort of approach rather than a text amendment, you know?
But nothing is off the table in the, you know, the dimensions, the lighting, everything, the content. I, I would, as staff, would steer us clear of, but everything else is on the table. Lighting passed a certain time, all of that. And, you know, the app, the applicant, we're in a tough spot as staff because we're recommending denial. So it's kind of difficult for us to present things to the applicant, for them to put into an application to, to present to you all, because we're already not in favor based on past planning efforts. Um, but, you know, based on just this discussion this evening, I think the applicant has heard some things that, um, or the applicant's representative that she can take back to the applicant, see their, if they're amenable to. So does that clear up our path forward for the, for the commissioner?
Okay, so, um.
Sir, one, one, one other question for staff. Uh, if, who's writing this text amendment since staff is of the opinion to deny it? Are they submitting to you the actual text of the text amendment? And then you get to edit it or say yea or nay? How does that process work?
Honorable Chair, through you, we'll present what the applicant sends to us. Um, we will work with you all, right? Because you're, you're, you all are the decision-making body on this as far as making a recommendation going forward to City Council where you could recommend change conditions, you know, uh, any alternative. Um, and of course, we'll give our opinion, but it's up to you all to, to move that forward. So even in your packet this evening, you can find what the applicant has proposed so far.
Went over it. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from commission? Donald?
Just one quick question. How does this sign, the size of these signs that Lamar is proposing, how do they compare in size to the county sign we already have on Grand? Are they approximately the same size?
Honorable Chair, through you, so to, to answer your question, the sign in front of the county courthouse is seventy-six square feet. And we're talking about close to three hundred square feet for, for these billboards.
Lot bigger. Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, any other questions?
So, fact that it's a non-conformance is just that it was there prior to the establishment of code for it?
Honorable Chair, through you, that is correct.
And options then in turn are either to try to change code or to accept the variance? Or consider the variance?
Honorable Chair, through you, both of the, I mean, so what we're, what we're working with right now would affect the non-conforming billboards, which are all five. So in essence, any of, any of them could be turned into a digital billboard. What you'll hear later is just for the Twenty Second and Grand sign. So that would be the only one affected through the variance.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a public comment on, on this? Please come on up and state your name and.
My name is Karen Voight. I own property on the Garfield side. There's no alley between Grand and Garfield at that point. I own a, a rental with two bedroom windows facing that billboard and I'm not happy to have that digitized. What I'm asking is if, if it's possible for me to get the letter that Lamar sent you, can you make that public?
It is, it is public, Phil.
How do I get it, Phil?
Honorable Chair, through you, um, on our Agenda Center, which I'm glad to take your email and, and, and send you a link for that.
Can tell me how.
It's on there, yeah. And, and if, if you've signed in on there and you put your email on it. Go ahead and put your email on there and we can get you that.
Thank you. And I'm glad you're thinking of denying that. That's.
Well, okay, thank you. Any other public comments on this issue? Seeing none. Um, final discussion amongst commissioners? Seeing, Donald, do you have a?
No, I was just, I was just going to move to postpone.
Okay, is there a motion?
So, uh, I moved to postpone that the amendments to fifteen dot fourteen dot one twenty dot H of the Laramie Municipal Code, uh, in order for city staff to collaborate further with the applicant in refining the focus of the text amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Tom. Um, final discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Evans, absent. Madam Moore.
Aye, aye.
Heisler White. O'Toole.
Aye.
Vacant seat Snyder, absent. Moody.
Aye.
That's four yeses, zero nos, and two absent here.
Okay, so postpone it. Okay, so postponed it, um, it's approved. Um, and so the, the, the date that this comes up will, will just be when the dust settles?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Um, so that's all that we have as Laramie Planning Commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn and reconvene as the Laramie Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those, um, approve the adjournment and reconvening, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? None? Okay, so we are now the Board of, of Adjustment. Um, first thing is, um, are there any, is there anybody here on the proposed variance that will want to speak to be sworn in? Is Megan, Megan, are you planning on talking on this?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, I, I would like to, excuse me, Chair, I would like to make some, uh, uh, brief comments on this again. Thank you.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you're, you're in.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so, um, staff, uh, Philip, give us the, the lowdown on the variance.
Yes.
Excuse me, this, so, so what's on in front of us is, is, is V A R, variance dash 24 dash 07, Lamar Advertising Digital Billboard Variance Request from Sections of Laramie Municipal Code 15 dot 14 dot 120 dot E dot 2 dot C. Um, Philip, give us.
Yes, Honorable Chair, members of the commission or the, uh, Board of Adjustment. Um, we've discussed this item, um, already with the text amendment. This variance has to do with just the billboard at 22nd and Grand. Uh, the staff report before you is, uh, accurate and is our stance and is complete. Um, however, it is, uh, on the app, on behalf of the applicant, they wish for this to be postponed to be heard at the same time as the text amendment. And, um, as staff, we honor that request of postponement, um, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, anything else to say on this? Seeing none? Okay, is there any public comment on, on this issue?
Mr. Chair is, is now the time.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Megan, I forgot you. Okay, applicant, but.
Mr. Chair, um, as I indicated previously during your prior meeting, Lamar's desire has always been to try and figure out if there is an amenable solution with the city specifically related to this board. Um, I'll certainly be glad to reach out to, uh, the member of the public that has a rental close and try and provide some information and, uh, discussion with her about what the board is being proposed and how the light pollution would actually be less than what, uh, her tenants see now. So my point is, is with all of this, we would request that the variance be postponed so that the, the commission can hear everything together and hear exactly what the parameters, meaning what the dimensions are. Um, the board right now in its existing form is as, uh, Philip indicated, but the digital platform is actually less and Lamar is able to consider what, what might be the pleasure of what that, that dimension and digital platform looks like. So would simply request that you hear everything, uh, together and make a decision at the same time when you have all information. Thank you so much.
Okay, hold on. So amongst the commissioners, would, would it be of any value when we have, uh, the, the meeting on this for Lamar to provide us, let's say, a video of what this sign looks like and what a, what a streaming advertisement might look like? Um, is that, is that something that would have any value, uh, to us? To, to, to see it visually as opposed to in our heads as to what, what it would, might look like?
I, if we're discussing the, just the text amendment, uh, would, I don't know whether that would be helpful because, uh, they could always apply for a conditional use on the code. If we get a set of code and they want to do something different, they could just apply for a variance or a conditional use permit. So, uh, yeah, I would like to see what they think of it. I have seen the signs in other cities, uh, and they have a lot of them in London. So I would like to see what they propose on a 300 foot, 300 square foot sign. You know, I think the, the big problem is, you know, the physical aspect of it. And that's, that's where the code is going to come in, not so much as what it's going to look like, but the actual physicality of it. That's just my opinion.
Okay, so no, not, not important?
Not to me.
Okay, all right. So ignore that, just, um, so if that's it for questions, is there a, a motion?
Janet, why don't you take it? Me and Don, Donald, for two of them.
All right. I move to postpone discussion of, of variance 24 07. Lamar Advertising Digital Billboard Variance Request from Sections L M C 15 dot 14 dot 123 dot U dot 2 dot C.
Check.
Is, 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 Philip, does, does that have what, what we need for the, okay, a second from Tom? Uh, and final discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote?
Evans, absent. Mattamore.
Aye.
Heisler White. O'Toole.
Aye.
Vacant seat. Schneider, absent. Moody.
Aye.
That's four yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Chair.
Okay, postponement is approved. Um, that's all we have on, on the docket here. So is there a motion to adjourn, uh, the, um?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Second from Donald. All those opposed to, uh, adjourn Board of Adjustment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say nay? We are adjourned. Okay.